What's your desire on this?
I'd recommend everybody just sleep on it.
Yeah.
If they think about bigger RV issues. I mean, if you want to look at RVs and trailers parked in front yards, we can look at that for you if you want to go back.
Well, not want to start from getting them off the street. Then they're all parked in the yard, then you have to talk about the yard.
Off the street, that's the issue.
Well, the one that was on Ridge Crest was indeed on the road. And I don't know if it's still there by any means.
It wasn't there until today.
I think it kind of comes and goes.
It was plugged in, it had water going through it, electric.
Somebody's made KOA park around here.
Well, we're good on it. The county's good on it right down the street.
There you go. We're pushing.
They'll collect.
That's not the city limits, but there's a gentleman working on that right down the road.
And that's going to be a good component for that.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a good point.
And I, your previous incompetent park director.
What?
I spoke to him about putting some RV pads up in Bell Park.
Uh, Bell Park doesn't want that, I can tell you that. Our park director's going to stand here around that commission.
Did you even do just the button for short terms for best pulls and something? And he said exactly.
I like the grant.
I like that idea. Wish you got a little bit of issue served.
But you can go even just, just go water electric for people coming in for the car shows.
No, I don't disagree, I'm just saying.
He didn't listen to me about putting rope bridges across the creek either, it's all your bridge problem.
Okay, so what's your wish and desire on this to take this and discuss it with Claire? Thank you.
Does table require a vote?
Um, no, on orders, no.
So a table for thirty days or?
Not in my recommendation to table for thirty days? Or is it cleaner, I guess?
Yeah, if you want to do that as well.
Only if I need to table for thirty days.
Second.
Have a motion second to table.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tensher?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wilder, you still awake?
Early.
Resolutions in the bus, the captain's going to do a first trade.
Charlotte, do I need to do number fifteen first?
Uh, is that for something to put on the trailer?
Wait, you can put it in.
I think you should.
Oh, yeah.
Number fifteen's waiting for the bidding on the, uh, the trailer. For the, congratulations.
What kind of trailer?
It's a tilt trailer, triple axle tilt trailer.
Is your weight?
Yes.
Why do we have to wait for a competitive bidding? And how much does it cost?
Thirty, forty-three thousand, thirty-three thousand six hundred.
So you have something to sit there and watch against this?
Yes, yes.
I've been with it for quite a while too, for a trailer. Because we don't have the truck to haul it, like a little boy, you know, type of trailer. So we have to haul the panel, which is where it's put, that we have. So I would find a trailer that was for a panel hitch. And we all found our junk truck that took all that asphalt paper off.
So you don't want to, this is a tilt trailer to haul the paper?
There's a picture coming in.
How's that, that trailer?
That has north.
No, it was just a hauler, it was a hauler. To haul our roller and our asphalt paper.
What's the real play?
This trailer?
Yes, sir, trucks, distributor.
What's your machine do to be here for eight weeks?
I expect to be here by the next city council meeting.
We will take the first thing.
There's not a lot of people that offer this kind of a trailer. Now, anytime we go through rates, we use that NVPA pricing. So this, what pricing they use?
I make the most that we, uh, about the ordinance waving competitive bidding for emergency purposes.
Second.
Motion second.
Okay, so you want to bring on person with hot water?
Oh.
Or do you really?
Yes, I'll do that.
Okay. Don't worry.
It's okay.
Are we tired? We're tired. Mr. Brown?
I understand what you're saying.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Pow?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Tensher?
What, uh, okay, yes.
Is that true?
Yes.
It is, now, this.
I make the motion.
An ordinance waving competitive bidding for purchase of a tilting deck trailer for the street department declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Make motion to waive second, third, or fourth?
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Tensher?
Yes.
Tensher?
Yes.
And you must read the document.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tensher?
Yes.
Mike Terry?
Yes.
Make motion that we, that we merge the funds?
Yay!
Let us say merge.
Our trailer's almost here, we haven't moved all of it. You're not your trailer. Wait.
So we don't adopt, you go to jail?
No. Just can't do anything.
You have to pay her when you go.
We gotta, we gotta.
You have to pay.
Pay that we need. Are we going to drive some location down?
I second it. It's about a trailer.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Daniel?
I'll get that.
Tensher?
Yes.
Mike Terry?
Yes.
Pass about George.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wilder, and the county.
And he's still up here.
And you're still up?
Yes. Number twelve's resolution that has a, with definite signatures, purchase further from our street fund.
Make motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Oh, motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Pow?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tensher?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. Number seventeen, uh, two fourteen.
Mayor of council, Mr. Terry. Uh, this is an ordinance waving bid to bidding for purchase of a fire vehicle declaring emergency and for other purposes. This will be the, uh, brush truck, it'd be a two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Silverado, there's five hundred eighty-four drive, three year cad truck. And we're going to have a flat bed on it, and we'll take our old brush truck, uh, uh, stuff on the back, but on the back of this. And, uh, basically, we built it so that we're spending more money on it.
And use existing skid bags?
Yeah, skid bag, and so, it's like, so we're using our existing skid pack, put it on a flat bed trailer that's on it. And, uh, basically, the reason we're doing this in this type of fashion because, uh, Chevrolet is the one that has a blocking differential, and that's what we have on our trucks, and that's what we're wanting on the brush trucks, so it'll be better. But, so there's our emergency purpose. Do you have any questions?
Who would buy these trucks, Brown?
You come from the hub, Chevrolet?
This brush truck, sorry.
Here it is. And it is in the budget, it's on the, and it's.
Did you already say what you're doing with the other ones that I missed?
The other ones? I guess we're going to put it off, because it's got a dent frame.
I would, I would, if you, I don't know, if parks for somebody with the interest in them always.
What's it?
How much is this?
It's going to be forty-five thousand, oh, six, after we put the, uh, after we put the flatbed on it, it's going to be aluminum flatbed on the back. It's going to, I think we got sixty, sixty.
Got what, about?
Sixty. Right, put the emergency lighting on. And the stuff on the inside.
How much is all that going to cost?
Oh, probably back there.
Oh, that's in fourteen.
It wouldn't have been four. It's, it's already in the budget, something like that. Okay, so we thought it would be around forty-five, fifty.
Oh, well, if it's in the budget, then I'm making motion, we, uh, as this ordinance, by title, or first read.
Second. Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Yes.
Tensher? James? An ordinance waving competitive bidding for purchase of our vehicles declaring emergency of our purpose.
Do you have a little emergency board?
I don't have them.
This is a fire, the emergency is just, you know, right?
So we can get, get it switched out, get done.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we spin the rules, we waive second, third, or fourth?
Batteries power on now, and there's no battery there.
I have a motion. Second, I have second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Daniel? Terry?
Yes.
James?
Uh, make motion to adopt the order.
Second.
Make motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
And Daniel?
Yeah.
Tensher?
Yes.
Does there, is it now?
Let's go for broke. I'm making motion, we, uh, elect the emergency clause.
What's your emergency, did you already, is it already coming in?
The emergency might be a brush fire next week, let it away at once.
If you take care of it, it's not going to wait much longer.
Matter of fact.
It might be a matter of course.
The way, the way the rest plan, what you're saying tomorrow, we need a decision to give. Second.
We have a motion second.
Mr. Terry?
Um, Pow?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Um.
Tensher?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
If that's about George.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, I am totally lost, sixteen, I don't know.
Yeah, sixteen. Sixteen, great enough, that's, great enough. I don't know where it's at.
This was something off the chair, for Lance, for his direction, I would just request to go off the first read, which is just a very rough draft. We're going to have to make some adjustments to it, so.
Make a motion to put it on for the party. That's all. Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tensher?
Yes.
Mike Terry?
Yes.
And, an ordinance mandating a planned review process for all department has before commercial development building permit is disputed for other purposes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Uh, this time we are department to report some questions from council. You see me for you, they want some of this?
Well, I'm in, is the person?
He is here.
But he wasn't here when my question came around, and I, we, I've looked over this a bunch, and it's in their report about wave of competitive bidding out there for vote round? Or what they, the lowest responsible bidder, they rejected. What, I mean, what was it? You know anything about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, uh, basically, they were extremely low, like alarming the load, red flag, and then upon kind of auditing the, they didn't get the required bids, therefore they made it, they, uh, I can't remember the exact verbiage, but it's just, a non-qualified bid.
Okay.
And so, I guess, now, that's what me and Lejeune met, see what our next step is, to get that, so by next month's council meeting, I'll have something for you on the, the game plan, I'm going to knock that out.
Well, I mean, it was, it was, it was more than one bid.
Yeah, there was, there was, but by.
It's got to be rebid, I guess.
Yeah, it has to be rebid, because to call to actually label it or deem it non-qualified, you jump into it.
Right.
Uh, you know, kind of like slanders, that's the way.
Yeah.
So, just to kind of throw it out there, because I mean, there, I think he did his due diligence on getting considered non-qualified, but, uh, that was the first, that's what I meant, I actually, I sort of decided, but where do we go from here? Because that was just.
That jumped out at me, although we always, we were doing a lot around there, we get one more bidder.
Right, absolutely.
Well, didn't they want the job?
Did, yeah.
The bidder?
Yeah.
So the bidder said, I bid on it, it was a good bid, and I stayed in line.
I think once he started getting, he called on it, he kind of got his SOQs or statements qualifications and.
We're going to qualify bidders, but he would qualify them before the bids are put out.
Right. Have them submit SOQs with the bids, I mean, their statement of qualifications, and then go, he did not do that.
Well, we didn't require.
Wow, I don't know what the city's.
They don't hardly require anything, we don't hardly ever qualify bidders, we just take bids. So.
We have a bunch more, they don't have.
But if the guy's sitting there standing, saying, you know, you put it out for bid, and I bid on it, and I'll do the job for that price, and I won, we stand and get sued.
Right, but in this case, right, Eric, he had, he had subbed out, Eric, he had subbed out after work, and then we called the company on, basically called him on, they're like, he never, he says, but that's why it doesn't make it non-qualified, five percent or whatever.
We're saying he's not qualified after the fact.
Right.
I'm saying, we need to get in the habit of qualifying bidders before they bid.
Right.
You know, have you been in business for more than five years?
Oh, I agree, I agree, especially on a job that size.
Those are, those are qualifications we need to put on, before the fact.
Right. No, they need to have SOQs, that's absolutely right.
I think we stand a chance of getting sued.
Mm-hmm. Because you don't want to get into something subjective, um, when you're calling something not qualified. And I don't think in this case it was, because I mean, but, like I said, down the road, you don't want to get into that.
But he was bonded, did we require a bond?
I would, yeah, sure, I'm sure you would have to.
I mean, and that's up to the bonding.
Were you here?
I was not here, this is about probably your half.
Yeah, the walk back.
I tried to read up on it, that's just kind of my work and knowledge on it, because one of my Michael last week, I'll say what we were at on that, so.
Well, I think, the last time we tried to disqualify a bidder, and that was because he did a bad job on the job he did before, so he sues. And we got out of it, right? So we, we had a contractor build a sewage plant, he'd been on the water treatment plant, he was lowest bidder. I think if we had qualified bidders before, and said, if you, if we've ever, if you've ever been sued, and, you know, for not completing a job in the last ten years, if you're not qualified, we won't take your bid.
And you couldn't do that, because they have the constitutional right to sue. And you can't disqualify a bidder based on that, but we, we won because his performance on that particular job is pitiful. And that's how we won.
Most of all, yes.
That's what he was arguing, was that we declined his bid because of these, the property was constitutional right to sue us.
And I think like Fort Smith does, they, they disqualify a whole lot of bidders before they even accept the bids. And I think we need to get in the habit of that.
Well, I think that typically have, and it depends on, if, if there's an engineer and architect involved, they do that, right? Am I not right?
They'll go in and look, and make sure that, you know, their license is good, their, their bond is good, they, they go in there and look for certain things, but as long as those things are good, then they're qualified.
And I think that's why, that's why Lejeune deemed me non-qualified.
So Michael was?
Right, Michael was the one that deemed me non-qualified, it wasn't, it wasn't on behalf of city, or it wasn't he saying.
But after the bid.
After the bid, after the bids, after we're submitted, no, because he was about fifty to sixty thousand dollars on the latter side of everybody else. I mean, it was, it, when I opened it, I mean, I had no knowledge of him, I was like, that doesn't look right. You know, I mean, I had no working knowledge of the history of it, so, but I think after he did his due diligence on it, he.
Mr. Wilder, you?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest issues with that contractor was, is that he submitted his bid, and he subcontracted, he listed subcontractors as a price for the subcontract, such as a licorician, that had no knowledge of the, of the project, and submitted bids to that contractor. He created a false bid with false subcontractors, and so on, so forth, and there's no way to really know that, to open the bid and check that stuff.
Well, and even, and I may be wrong here, but when anybody opens those bids, whether, whether it's Michael Lejeune, or Jeremy Shore, or whoever, they leave here, if I understand, to qualify after the bid's open, and that's, that's a procedure that we.
That, that would be a qualification, and they were, I mean.
And so therefore they can. You remember years ago, uh, parks, we had a bid process, and gentleman was about the same amount of money away, and he, and it was all kinds of red flags, but it was a building problem, but it is okay.
And then he got sued.
And then he got sued later, Fort Smith, yeah, so, uh, Tim, right?
That was the old, way under bid, come back, start a changeover, just get it back on.
No, 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 we got the others, again. Yeah, there's a law change, yeah. Well, no, I think that's the, the.
Yeah, the, maybe the rock was, yeah.
Yeah, I was, this is going way to the front, yeah, yeah, the rock works, it's old, yeah. Thank you. Uh, any other questions, or, or your department has that are here?
Yeah, there's one about that. That's the way cops versus we grow.
Two, I love either, or, I mean, did you win one?
Something, yeah.
Did they just lay down, or what?
Yeah.
They grew?
That's just what team's next. Oh, boy.
The what team?
Next.
Oh, yeah, okay. Any other, anything else for the department has that are waiting? Council, form.
We're, uh, so let's recap on the bond issue for our decision three. So, how are we moving forward? We're looking at using the existing sales tax for funding. And we're looking at using a, a bonding company, or are we going to explore the?
USDA.
I like the USDA, here's my thought, I like the USDA deal. Uh, but also, we talked about, we just renewed that tax, right, so we're, year one. That twenty-eighteenth is year one of the next ten years left.
The first to twenty-six.
Good till twenty-six.
Okay, so this is year two. So we'll say we've got eight, I'm going to, someone, I'm going to take out two years, we'll say we've got eight years left in the quarter. You're saying about three hundred grand, so we're looking at two point four million, the proxy.
I'm saying that, he says you have to put both issues on the ballot.
That's on one.
To use the tax, and to, and have.
Another ten years to twenty thirty-six, is what he's saying?
That's what I'm saying, uh, on motion, that tax would be extended out until that bond's paid off. So if it took twelve years, instead of ten years, it paid off, it got extended out twelve years, whatever it is.
And, and that's on the ballot, too, right?
Those two questions would have to be on the ballot.
Right.
So if you've got to put the first one on there, just to use that tax, you might as well say, let's go ahead and extend the length of that tax until that debt is repaid. So if it, if it couldn't be paid in ten years, it was paid in twelve, then, then the sunset got extended to twelve.
Well, anyway, that option for the USDA, the, add the tax, I don't, I'm not putting it on, I know it'd be great.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get this wrong, pal.
Nobody does.
I, I'd rather use existing than just extended deal. But it's, it's not, it's probably going to take an extension. That wasn't, when I brought that up, that was my whole tenth agenda, was just use existing tax we already got. It was just adds to bond what we needed, and extend it if we needed to extend it, and be done with it. And, and, because it's already there, that's, that's all it can be used for anyway. It can't be used for nothing else other than, than the fire department, so, right? We were just asking to bond it so we could move forward and get some of this stuff started, because there ain't none of it getting any cheaper. So he said, when he said have to be off of a fire truck, well, this time this year, it'll be six hundred fifty thousand. So he said the next steps would be, they get the, uh, all crews, I guess?
Or no, really, just see what the USDA, what kind of term they'll get, because to me, I think, let's say the USDA takes nine months, well, by the time, to me, we try to get a, a bond thing, and a special vote, or whatever, I mean, we're, we're into nine months, I would say. Do you want myself, or, and myself and Tom, to contact USDA and, and go find out what their, what that procedure would look like?
Yeah.
Yep, and then, and then at the same time, you need to, if I heard him right, you need, you need your design, and you need to get that down.
Yeah.
You need an idea of what you're building, right? Right, I figured, that's sure not, not having a four million dollar house.
I agree, that's, that four million dollars was to, to build a station out there and.
Equipment, right. So, we will do that.
Because we've got two trucks that need to be replaced, and that was, that was in the midst of this, and it not proved that out there, so, I mean, but my, my thing was that the, I don't know, the timeframe is my concern, because, I mean, we're, because we're going to have to put it on the ballot, which I fear that's probably where I will end up going. That's why I was asking, you know, he was going to send us information of what our timeframe was, and what we had to do to get it put on the ballot, whether it was in the primary in May, or, which he says is pretty short to do.
Been looking for it, I think you liked the June twelve.
So, I mean, that, that's my thing with the, like you say, with USDA, it's the timeframe issue of it, because if we do it, have to put it on the ballot in the general election, we want to make sure we go. Oh, I guess what we're trying to say with USDA deal, just don't want it to be drawn out, and we think we'll keep getting these false hopes, kind of, we're doing how it's part of it.
I think, I think whether we do it tomorrow, or, or the next day, or whatever, we're good, with Tom, and we get you, and it may be, he said several times it could be eight, nine months, but he also said, and it's the fact, because it's literally nine miles away, it may not take that long. And, and with money, you got the sales tax in place to pay, pay for that.
What are your, what are your track?
Their timeline to the vote, yesterday was the final day of filing to get on the primary ballot, and the Yasty ballots will be mailed out the first week in April, so you're past.
So that's, okay.
But if you're thinking of go put on the general, you need to back off at least ninety days or so before November, so, I mean, you're docking, or going back to August.
August?
Yeah, August or so, that's, that's the election director on that, so don't, don't think you have till October to get it on the November ballot. You need to be first of September, probably, to hoping to drop that date on November that.
So, sounds like a couple things need to happen.
And if you're, are, trust on the USDA, you need to hurry, because soon as the next census comes out, we're going to qualify, with anything over ten thousand, probably, we're not qualified. That's up to table to lay out. He said. Two years.
Yeah, it's twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
But we have to, I mean, we'll have to wait.
Right, hello, is that, that free?
Eighty-nine, is it?
About, about two twenty-ten, the estimate.
The Tom's draft, I mean, I wouldn't expect it to take two years. But just, he said, you don't have to declare how you're going to fight.
Right.
He said, you can just word it as a bond.
Right.
And let it go at that, and you just have to have backup, meaning, if you fall on the USDA, you can go to a investment banker, just have it lined up. Now, I financed a hundred eleven million dollar system living facility through HUD, for a forty-year life, exactly, and it took forever to get closed. So it is about an eight to nine month process, we did replace numbers early, just like he's talking, so I know all about, this is exactly what I have. The only difference is HUD requires a, uh, eight-year paydown or a penalty for buying, for paying off early, uh, with that two-year lifetime. So he's saying this doesn't happen, that's a positive flex, so if you pay it off, then you can.
True.
I don't see that happening, but, uh.
But the way he said though, we could go ahead and begin with, with the, the wording of it and everything like that, you're just.
Fine, you'll know by, the fact that we're missing the deadline already, you'll know by the general election date, by August, who you're going to vote.
Or we can go with a special, I mean, we still have time for a special election, too.
So if we're going to word it as just a bond, we can go ahead and get vans to draw and, uh, the ballot, and we're just going to leave it on, whether we do something with USDA, or whether we do something with crews and associates, we can go ahead and have vans to draw up the language for the ballot.
And nine, twelve thousand dollars for a special election, not that that's a killer, but that's something to consider.
We, that's all I'm saying.
It may be.
I don't have that special. Always lunch.
I mean, that'd be something that, I mean, that would even be no brand.
Unless you have something else to share.
You know they went to, the school or go to the, the general?
Law change, we have to, we have to change. Well, changed it, we have to, let's say that changed.
So they, they got their opinion, probably, so they're, they'll...
Well, the, the celebration of legislature was, the special elections for school board, or these, even these special taxes tend to draw smaller audience, informed people who vote for the tax increases, and legislature wants to move to the general election, so you have people turning out to vote against any tax increase.
Right.
Or anything they understand of the tax increase, which is your, your problem on selling this is making people understand it's not a tax increase.
Tell them to do, yeah. So twelve thousand dollars may not be...
So if David Minz prepares this, we have to put an ordinance on for the council to approve it?
Right.
Okay, so we can go ahead and put that on for the next month's meeting?
Right.
Uh, Charlotte?
Yes.
Don't put that ordinance on for next month's meeting?
Uh, what you have?
Has the ordinance from David Minz to through the language for the special, for the elections.
Might have contacted the election director and see what the actual cost is now, since it says we're doing work to pay for ballots, and we're going with the old electronic machine, that significantly lowers the cost of the election printing costs, a huge component, and you only have one voting base here, so the, the cost could be much, much less than what you...
Special elections?
No, it sounds, I, I guess we'll put it on the regular election, right?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying get the, get the wording on it, and then we'll, we'll decide.
All orders?
Hold off for next month's meeting.
Alright.
So, we're checking, you guys ready?
There'll be two, we'll be as one, you know?
One calling and one is gonna be?
Right, okay, that's fine, and you're gonna get with kind of the long process of what you want?
Yeah.
Scarb, what we need. Okay, I'm sorry, what we need, sorry. Thank you. You?
No.
I did not hear that. All right. Anything else? Did you, what did you, did you say something to sign, is that what you were saying?
I said we need to sign stuff.
Okay. I was just learning, uh, and I appreciate you said your, uh, the gentleman's house had burned down up there. Mr. Kent, uh...
Markville?
Markville, yes. Markville. I guess what is the, the time, or, or is there an ordinance in there, you know, as far as when the house does burn down, you know, that, that has to be removed, or whatever?
There is no time.
I don't think there is anything.
You have to wait for insurance people to do their thing.
Right.
In which...
You probably didn't have.
You didn't have insurance.
Yeah, this, this one is a very unique mess. Uh, I know Mr. Moss is, is, believe me, he's been here in Charlie's office, and I made a mistake blowing it all, but...
He came to my office, and I called, and I think the lady flubbed out and screamed everything.
No, no. He, he got you, he's been, he's been everywhere, and I, I understand. Uh, but it, it really is a process, I mean, the guy that's doing it, cleaning it up, is doing it for nothing, uh, so he's working on it, and he tell, he told me personally that he would get it this week if the weather permitted. Now, there's an, the other, the rest of that cleanup issue is a slab, existing slab there, that was from the original house. And I don't know what the ordinances are about building on the existing slab, uh, I, I have no idea, so he's already questioning that before it even happens. Sonny, you know where I was talking to you at?
Uh, you know, I'd have, we'd have to look and see what, what he's got in mind, I mean, I don't know, building on the original slab would be a problem, but long, you know, everything is...
Everything is...
I mean, so, this gentleman, the question, I'm questioning the gentleman who's talking about it, is, um,
I think the church has offered to do something like that, I heard that they were gonna bring another store's building and park it on the slab and let you live in it, well, that, we can't do that, that's, that's what he got out of, and so we can stop that, and we're gonna have to stop that, it's a real tricky thing, I'm here to go, right now, they're living in the car, and I can tell, and we have had, uh, the police department, we've had escorted by, or they escorted D H S, I believe, right?
Adult Protection Services.
D H S, huh?
Adult Protection Services.
Yeah, okay, and they have, uh, gone and interviewed, and our own code enforcement officer, officer's been there several times, and they deemed him, uh...
Coherent.
Coherent, capable of making decisions, so it's kind of a tough deal. So, I mean, I, I, I get it, it's, it's, it's very unsightly to say the police, so hopefully that'll be cleaned up soon. We'll go from there, I don't think the city can, and it is, it, it belongs to him, property is his, there's no doubt about it.
We, we can find him.
Yeah, there's, there is that, that you can find, people... If they find him, we'd just be basically blaming against his property or whatever.
What, what sanitation features does he have there?
Well, I'm understanding, none.
That's the health department, or, the health department?
Well, and they, they modify, they, I don't...
They have condemned it to...
Nope. That hit, oh.
For all suing? For all suing in front of you.
Well, I don't know, I'm super, but that's somewhat of an understanding, I haven't gone, checked.
Moss is still... Worried about the flip?
Okay.
I have one other thing, Ed.
Yes, sir.
Lance, probably, son, are you gonna pick on this, or?
No, I just want you to, just breathe a little.
Uh, okay, if there's nothing else, I'm, I'm getting ready to entertain the motion. Uh, but... Thank you, sir.
No, stop.
Oh, it's, it's kind of great. Thank you. Thanks to council for their hard work in doing what we do, and I know the department heads, and please pass on to employees of yours, that we thank them, the council thanks them, I thank them for the hard work that every, every employee does, because and I didn't give this in speed, but it certainly be pointing, without everybody, those, those guys that get the ditch and all that, we don't have anything to work with. Thank you, brother. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, nineteen minutes, forty-six seconds, will you speak?
That's exactly.
So... Much later, motion is second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. He was taking two.
How much money was it?
He was in twenty-two. He gave it, he had it in forty-six. Mike thinks... I was twenty-five, I was twenty-six and a half.
Tim, that's all. We have no place to go but up, is what I can tell.
I had, I had said twenty-six and a half. He's got the, he's got six, six, seven. Yeah, oh, yeah. I don't know about the horse breast, but it's, I mean, I heard there's a short...
You're staying with us?
Actually, that's more...